Okay.
Righty ho, thanks Paul. Who's doing the minutes and so forth and that?
I'm doing the minutes.
You are? Right, okay. Have we got any apologies?
We do. We've got apologies from councillor Warren White, Charlie Clare and also Nigel Morrison.
Right, okay. And we've heard nothing from Dean?
We haven't.
No, he said thank you for the paper I sent around earlier today, so presumably he's on his way.
Yeah. Okay, well, we'll make a start then. If there are any declarations of interest, can we do it as we go? As the normal minutes of the last meeting on the, oh blimey, 11th of November. Everybody happy with them? Having read and inwardly digested and etcetera? Good, okay. Shall we move to the action list then? I think it's all just as is, isn't it? You know, everything is just going on as, as and when we can. Dreadfully silent and only one of you muted.
I see, that's all all right, Mike.
I'm just about to assume that, Robin, yeah. Thanks, okay.
It's all ongoing.
Covid-19 then, to discuss a verbal update by the town clerk.
Thank you. So without mentioning anything that's going to come up later on the agenda, just to state the obvious that we're still in the current lockdown. So if the town council, that means the TIC's closed, shop mobility's closed. Other functions such as planning go on, mowing the grass goes on, burying people goes on. But we're where we are until something else happens.
Is that it?
Yep.
Right, thanks Paul. Welcome Dean. You're muted. Okay, any questions about Covid arrangements on that?
No.
I just wanted to say, I come out of a Covid meeting about an hour ago. It doesn't appear that, that though what the children are doing, going back to school, it doesn't really appear that they've actually yet formulated all the details to that, which must be quite frustrating for the schools. They haven't sort of, how do I put it? They're presuming they're going back. But there's nothing concrete yet, so that may come out over the half term and we have to feel sorry for the teachers who have to jump through all these leaps to actually achieve it, Mike. So I think it'd be worth watching that because it will change the way the town is because, you know, there'll be less young people walking about if they're back in education, won't they? You know, if they do go back, I don't know. It's very much, they haven't actually given them any proper advice yet. Let's roofs heard anything as a, as a governor, different to I have. But it doesn't seem like it's there, which is an interesting thing because, you know, it seems to have gone silent, especially on that front.
Okay, I'm not sure that the children going back to school will make a lot of difference to the economic development. But we can but say it's just another item, isn't it? Mary?
There are some areas of the town that will be busier if schools go back. Definitely around the supermarkets and areas when the schools are going home time and arrivals and that sort of thing. So there will be a Covid impact.
Is it just me or is Mary very quiet?
Very quiet.
Yeah. Can you put your noise up a bit?
I don't know how to turn my sound up that you hear.
Maybe if you, can you lean in a bit, Mary? That might help.
Lean it in? Lean me in?
Move yourself closer to your microphone.
I'm as close as I could possibly get without you being really appalled by the large face.
Okay.
Well, just so you know then, Mary. You're all right, I can hear you.
Yes, I'm just saying that around supermarkets and certain areas of the town, there will be extra traffic as a result of schools going back.
Yes, yeah.
At certain times.
Warren, welcome, but we had an apology from you.
I thought I'd make a special effort to get out of my other.
And we welcome it. And your snowy background. Okay, any other comments on the Covid situation? We're on our agenda, item five, Warren, at the moment. No, all right, well, we'll move on then. The all wrapped up update from Emma.
I'm muted. Yeah, so we did the, the campaign. It got cut a little bit short because we got, we went into lockdown just as it was kind of kicking off. But we've got the selfie banner all ready to go for next year now because we couldn't put that up. We've got the bunting out, which was going to be collected the end of this month, but that might have to happen whenever shops reopen, which we don't know when that will be. The online advent calendar went really well. It had really good engagement. Facebook was the best. We had one post that was over 3,000 people saw it, so that was really good. And we had a couple of traders say that they got sales off the back of it, so.
Oh, great.
I think that's great. Yeah, I think that's mostly it. The raffle will have to, it has been postponed until whenever it's best to do it. We can't really say when that will be.
Okay, thanks Emma. Mary?
And may you say about collecting in the bunting, would it not be just as good to leave it with the shops that have got them now? So they can continue to use it rather than you taking it in and then if you have changed the length or anything, then you wouldn't have the same back that you gave out last time. Consequently, it'd be a nightmare to organise again.
We were going to collect it back in just so that it doesn't go missing and we can use it again next year. But Paul, what do you think?
I think if people have cut it to a certain length and want to keep it for next year because they've done things with it that suit their purposes, then that's fine. I think we're just going to make sure we keep tabs on it. Not everybody is necessarily as organised and efficient with these things as you are, Mary. So we might have to deal with everybody slightly differently as appropriate.
Yes, I mean, keep a list by all means of who's got what, so that you can remind them to put it out again. But you need to, I think, in this case, give people the opportunity to, to take control of it themselves.
I think there's another significant royal thing coming up in there for the Queen, so she's another milestone. Is it diamond or something coming up? So that's something for the bunting, isn't it?
Well, it's not, it's not ordinary bunting, is it? It's sort of shopping geared bunting.
Yeah.
Christmassy.
And quite wintery as well, so it wouldn't really make sense as we go into spring.
Okay, anybody else? No? Well, staying with Emma then, we'll move on to the town centre management verbal report.
Yeah, so obviously the town centre is mostly closed at the moment, other than the markets and the essential shops. But I've been working on a health questionnaire that I've started sending out to businesses. Asking them what they think we can do to help them, rather than us just guessing. And once we reopen, I will be going around individually to the shops to do the health questionnaire with them, rather than just sending it out and expecting them to get it back to me when they're really busy. And I've just been working on looking at summer entertainment for the town centre in the summer. And I've also been doing some coaching with the town centre manager at Princess Risborough, which has been really helpful and she's been telling you how she's done it and what she's done to increase footfall in her town. So that's been very helpful. And I've also been looking at ways to promote the website to residents rather than people from the outside. So the website was created really to bring people into Buckingham. But I've been looking at posters and merchandise and banners to make it appeal more to residents rather than people coming from the outside, so.
Sounds good. Yep, any questions?
Only just, only just to thank Emma for what she's doing. She gave a very good report of events in her new role. And I would like us to record our thanks to her because going forward, she's going to be very key in, in the communication between all the local, the local authorities and, and the town traders and being an envoy for progress, I should imagine. So I think we should watch this space. I'm expecting over time it will deliver something quite wonderful for Buckingham.
Yeah, I quite agree. And you're quite right, Robin. We do tend to accept the graft that people are doing without thanking them, don't we? So thanks to everybody. Shall we move on then?
Dean has a hand up.
Oh, sorry.
Very, very quick one. Emma, congratulations on your new role. And we, we've been having a conversation at the, in the university amongst the enterprise students who are quite keen to be involved in what the town centre and how it performs beyond Covid, what that's going to look like. And they wonder whether or not you'd be able to provide them with a kind of, a couple of minutes recording that just says what you're, what you're hoping to achieve over the next, next year, so that they can then feed back to you what as students they would like to see from the town. That might kind of help you develop a strategy from a younger person's perspective, if that's helpful to you at all.
Of course.
But I thought I'd mention it now because it's kind of relevant to what you, what you were talking about.
Yeah, that's quite a good idea, that is. Dean, are you, are you actually physically with students? Or is it all on Zoom or something or the other?
It's a bit of both. So we've got daily LFD testing. So anybody who's on campus has to be tested twice, which means that students and staff can be on campus. So I do, I do a bit of both really. The students that, the students that are remaining with us on campus that haven't gone home either internationally or nationally, we're trying to encourage that they have some kind of contact or space within the university that they, you know, that they can congregate at a safe distance. They're allowed to do that so long as they've had their LFD testing. So there are students around, there's probably about 200 students in and around Buckingham who are still shopping in and around Buckingham. So this is still relevant to them, you know, during the, during the lockdown period. But even more so when we start to open up again. But as Robin said, we have no real indication at this stage what, when that's going to happen.
Interesting. LSD testing was something quite different when I was a student.
LSD, LFD, yeah, I'm sure it was.
What, what, what was it, Mike? Could you, could you, could you remind me? Can you not remember?
Outside this meeting, we'll have a chat, Robin, if you do need reminding. Okay, anything else on that? No? We'll go on to item eight then, supporting businesses to bounce back. This is a paper that came around today, so you may not all have seen it. Paul, do you want to introduce this?
Yeah, thank you. So it came around late because it was discussed at TCE on Monday, so we couldn't send it out with the papers as we normally would have done. I dropped a couple of things there we've already spoken about. The town councils have put an additional 10K into our events budget for this year for bounce back events. So we're just working out the details of what we're going to do with that. So things include, we're going to do an otter trail. So we'll have 10 three foot high fibreglass otters around the town, hopefully some of them with businesses. It'll be possible to sponsor them. And then we'll produce information with a map around how to move around them and hopefully get them painted different colours by different charities or businesses.
Is that self painting, Paul? Are you expecting the sponsors to paint them or are they going to be commissioned?
No, I think they'll be commissioned and the town council will do it. So we're making sure they're all done to the same kind of standard and quality.
Right, okay, thank you.
And there'll be information coming around about sponsorship opportunities for that. And maybe the other key thing for this group is we're going to be putting on some form of entertainment around the market every Saturday during the summer months, so June, July, August. So it could be a range of things. They'll be outside the Old Jail. So not things that are aimed to gather a large crowd, but just to give a bit of a buzz and a bit of extra atmosphere on Saturdays.
Yeah, we've done that before with some success. Okay, anything else?
Just with regards to the entertainment, is that something that we're approaching local artists for? As in sort of people from the Buckingham Acoustic Club and things like that? Or are you going out to sort of others, other sources for that, for the, for the entertainment?
It's early days, but it'll probably be some and some.
Okay, great.
I would imagine that Pete Thelby could help with that and Mike Moise because they're involved with local bands, local decent bands.
Yeah, that's right.
You know, sort of single performer types and all that. So yes, Robin?
Well, we are gifted, aren't we, in the town centre that we've got some investment, which I think the one in the town centre by the Old Jail, we got that electrics in there for entertainment. And, and we've always had a good working relationship with the Old Jail when it comes to doing events. So we've also got the busking area, we mustn't forget. I think that's something which doesn't cost money, but once it's safe to encourage the buskers back into the town, I rather like seeing the buskers. When you go up towards Waitrose or into the market town, they actually do, do a soaring trade there, if you ever look in their cases. And some of them are actually really very good. You know, so I think we should try to include that because if, open that up again. But I think that needs to be carefully considered. It doesn't draw a crowd, but it does, it does cheer people up when they're queuing to go into Waitrose at the moment, if anybody's there. I saw someone the other day. So I think that's something else we can do additional. But the team's working on it. Emma and, and Amanda and Claire, they're working on all this together. So something will come forward quite worthwhile.
Okay, thanks, Robin. Mary then, Howard?
Is there any other option of a more of a wandering minstrel type entertainment? Obviously there's the Old Jail and the busking area as the permanent sites.
We had a wandering minstrel come with us when we opened the circular walk. I think I might still have his, Warren's laughing. I might still have his contact details because we could try it. That, that, you know, somebody wandering around the town strumming something or the other and that might be good fun, I guess, yeah?
Yeah.
Give some of the other areas of the town a look in on the, the entertainment front.
That, that is a point because it does tend to sort of focus on either the Waitrose area, as Robin was saying, with the buskers, or outside the Old Jail. And we do want to try and get people interested in other parts of the town, don't we? Just to spread the load a bit more. Howard?
I think it's a really good idea. As the otters are made out of fibreglass, are you intending to keep them to use in subsequent years or is it going to be a one-off?
So, well, as you say, they'll certainly be usable at the end of the year. We've, we're, we may auction them off, we may keep them and reuse them, we'll see how it goes. Some of them will be positioned on plinths that we'll have to install at points around the town. So we might decide we want to do something else next year instead of otters and auction off the otters or sell them or something, or we might want to reuse them.
I think we get, being at the price of them, we'll, we'll think very carefully what we actually do with them. We might auction them off and they might only raise £20. I think someone would have a really good sculpture for £20. I think we need to think carefully. I think the committee's got to come back and actually make a decision on that after the year. If it's successful, we may want to keep them, store them and bring them out in a subsequent year, even if we do something different. I, I'm, I'm not too sure that, we won't know how they last. There was comments about because they're fibreglass and their longevity and that. But I'm not keen on auctioning something off. It's very difficult to get stuff in the first place and we should have a careful consideration around that and review it very carefully. My view is that we should keep them if at all possible. We have got the theme of the otters in the park and that theme will play out in subsequent generations or two or three years down the line. So if we've got them.
It's something for the TCNA and the council to decide, isn't it?
It will do. You're quite right, Mike.
Anybody else got any comments on the paper? No? Okay then, we'll move on to item nine. Louise has just switched her camera on again and hear what she's got to say about Buck's floor.
I'm just going to apologize now and say my internet connection is really bad. So if you can't hear me, let me know and I'll turn my video back off.
What?
Um, yeah, so we're nearly at the end of its funding year, which is the 31st of March. It was a little bit extended because of coronavirus, but we can't go beyond that point, which does have some disappointing sides in that we can't have a launch event because there just hasn't been an opportunity to do that. But also some positives because we're going to redirect the money that we would have spent on that towards just improving the app a little bit more, doing some of those ideas we talked about right at the beginning, but didn't do straight away. So it should be on, I know I said in the report that it should be on, one of those is to get it on Google Play. It is on Google Play at the moment, but the search engine optimisation needs to be improved a little bit. So in order for it to actually come up, you'll have to put in Buck's floor Buckingham at the moment until we just tweak that to make that perfect. But it's only been on there a few days, so.
Okay, anybody got any questions about the, about the paper? There's a recommendation that we note it, which I think we could do. Yes, Robin?
Just, just to say that we are going to have a time when we can launch this even prosperity. We need to get people to see what it is. Just keep that under review. I mean, we could either socially media it, launch it in the sense that councillors or members of the committee and members of the public actually go out and, and do a sort of social media launch of it in the sense that they're using the app and doing stuff as they go around the town and comment on it. That way, you, you don't, we, having an event is difficult, but we, there are other ways of doing something and bringing people in, you know, commenting on it. So perhaps we should review whether that's possible because there's been a lot of work gone into it. Covid's interrupted everything, so. And also it'll promote it there because not everyone will realise it's there. You know, it's just, you know, that's one way around it.
Way back in May, so it has, it has had a launch in that sense. It's just that, given how many people came together to make it, it would have been nice to do something in person.
I just, I just got the idea that.
I'm thinking about its one year anniversary, which will come up in May. I think by May, there should be a decent opportunity to do something that may still be very online based. But that involves more people and, and gets people talking about it again, I think would be good. But actually, the numbers of people using it at the moment are pretty good.
Sorry, Louise, there have been people out using it, doing, doing the trial as it were.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so about two and a half thousand.
Yeah. Dean, you're muted.
I just muted myself. Right, Louise, I just had a quick look on Twitter and I know you've been active promoting it on Twitter. Does the Twitter feed link to the website that sits with the tourist information? So that it kind of, it's a kind of a storyboard for, a live storyboard for the website? Does it, does it link up to any kind of websites? You know how sometimes the Twitter feed can kind of be the?
No, it just takes you to the app.
Okay. I just wondered whether or not.
Yeah, I see what you mean. It takes you to the app because the website has its own social media. Discover Buckingham has its own social media.
Okay. So, so would it feed back into Discover Buckingham then or to the website that, is it Emma? Emma, do you run the other websites?
I do Discover Buckingham, yeah. We could, there is a function on, on the website that I can put a Twitter feed on there, so I could do that.
I was just thinking it's a nice way of getting people to find it and then follow it almost and, you know, use some of the stories you were talking about, the swan and the kids that were playing in the snow and things. They can, they can then find it and it might inspire them to click on to it and when they're, when they're walking about. I don't know, it's just an idea.
I'll have to look into it because I'll have to see if two Twitter accounts can be attached to the website.
And that could get confusing if you've got two separate ones as well. Yeah.
Yeah, but it, it might work. I'll have a look into it tomorrow.
Yes, definitely worth thinking about.
Anything else on that? I mean, I see it as one of the, the Covid successes for us, getting that thing up and running. And, and as Louise said, there's going to be a press, press release. When's that going out? Louise, the press release?
And so I had hoped to do it next week, but I think it will have to wait, wait another week just because I really want to be certain that that SEO on, within the App Store is exactly as we want it.
When, when's half term?
Next week.
It's next week.
I mean, it'd be really good if it could go out and be usable during half term, wouldn't it?
And it would be wonderful, but I'm not working next week. Because I'm moving house, I'm afraid, Mike.
Okay, well, we'll leave it to you. Anything else? Okay, we'll move on yet again. Then we'll go to the town centre design working group. There's a paper there from Paul. Do you want to introduce that, Paul?
Yeah, a very brief paper. Warren may want to say something.
You'll get a chance.
Heading it up. We just say that the working group is being set up. TCE agreed to send the mayor and possibly a couple of other councillors to support the working group to discuss the scope for a brief to give a designer to review options for the town centre.
Good. Okay, thanks. Warren, do you want to comment? Once you're off mute?
Oh, well, just as good news, so we can crack on with trying to get a date in the diary for our first get together.
Okay. Any other comments, Robin?
Yeah, I, I think the minutes, I've just read the, there's draft minutes. There's other stuff that the group, councillors wanted to put in there, which is just a consultation. Because when you have a consultation, it's the more information you put in front of people, the better the decisions can be and the better. Now, look, I, I'll, I'll go back to the town clerk because it's not actually in the minutes, just a brief outline of it. But I do think that, you know, there was a discussion around the practicalities of it at town centre events. A fluid discussion around it, around the historicals, the past and the present. But I think it's, as it was agreed at the committee, everyone has the right to reexamine something. And it's, and it's for Buckingham people in the end to decide how they want their town centre to be. And that must be in an open and fluid way. So I think that that was the way that the events committee were looking at it. They thought it was far too early to make a judgment on it until we get further down the consultation route of it. And then people will all have their opinions. But stopping something at this stage is, is really wrong and we need to, we need to examine it. But there was something that, I knew what to say, that the last time, I think we looked at it and Warren might well remember this, this, under the Buckingham plan, did a sort of look at this as a scoping report once. And I think it was looked at before that. So it's a repeating challenge to the town how they do it. But people will come and feed into it. And the important thing is, as I said earlier, whatever happens, if it does happen, it has to be, you know, something that the town overwhelmingly supports and wants to happen. Because once you do change something, it's very difficult to go back. So it's got to be done in a proper way. I'm sure that's the ambitions of everyone. But I'll see what comes out and I'll just make sure that information that, what's came out in the meeting actually gets to the subgroup to look at it. They, they can either disregard it or, or take it on board.
Do you want to comment, Warren?
Well, see, I'm not part of what the, the town council committee just debated, but I'm not aware of anyone actually looking at the town centre since the 1990s refurbishment. So this is the first time that anyone's proposed having a proper working group to, to see if in the 21st century and post-Covid, do we need to look again at how the town centres divvied up between the pedestrian and the car?
We did skirmish with it during the community plan day, didn't we?
Very briefly, but it never ended. There was no formal discussion on it and it didn't become a project either.
It was looked at though, wasn't it? It was looked at. There was a sort of brief consultation on it.
No, I drew up the consultation paper for that back in 2006, seven. It didn't include pedestrian, pedestrianising the town centre.
I've been back and looked over that. Well, we'll, we'll see what comes out. But certainly as, as Robin suggests, all grist of the milk is helpful to formulate the opinion. Anything else on that then? No? We'll move on to item 11, the Buckingham Village's Community Board Covid Support and Economic Recovery Group. Not a very succinct title, but it says what it does on the tin, to receive a verbal update from group members. Anybody want to comment? It was on the poll. Have you got any ideas to bring out of that? Any striking bits?
All I can remember is the conversation we've just had actually about the working group. That seemed, that was the highlight of the meeting.
It was rather, wasn't it? Yeah. Warren, you chaired it. Do you want to add anything?
Well, I suppose the one thing we're struggling with is people coming forward with projects that merit investment in. So there's a bit of an open, open door at the moment, that if the town has some good ideas, that will help either the current Covid situation at the moment and presumably into the summer period, but also the longer term in, in terms of, you know, is there capital investment that we want, want to try to point in the direction of the town centre? So obviously the, the whole reason for discussing the, the potential partial the potential partial pedestrianisation came out of that Covid stroke town centre environment. But if there are other projects that we can look at, then, then now is a good time to start putting them forward. Because we'll have all summer to discuss potential ideas and there is funding available. Obviously we're not talking about millions of pounds, but we are talking about tens if not, you know, a hundred thousand pounds.
Is, is there any device that the, the group could use to sort of publicise our invitation to submit ideas?
Well, I suppose we're open to suggestions. Either via the town council or via elected councillors or stakeholders. I suppose the only danger of a sort of a wide open invitation is, is how to, how to filter those through the democratic process. But it's not a sort of a grant. This isn't a grant body as such. It's more about how do we initiate projects for the investment of the town? That we've always complained over the years that Ayles Rival or Buckinghamshire County Council didn't invest enough in our town centre. We have a pot of money now to invest in our town centre, but for some reason, our local councillors are a bit, and the stakeholders are very silent in how we want to best spend it. So how do we, how do we reappraise the opportunity with an open chequebook to get best bang for our buck with the right projects?
But have we, have we sort of canvassed the views of the likes of Buckingham society, the university, other stakeholders we have?
Well, indeed, well, through the community board working group, subgroup and obviously about, you know, by coming to the, coming to this committee too. I mean, it's not, it's not a buck in a specific issue. A number of our community boards are, are struggling to get good projects to invest in. And I think actually it's probably a sign that we're not used to having, you know, tens of thousands of pounds locally held for us to spend on decent projects.
Okay, Dean?
When, I think it was about 18 months ago, prior to sort of the pandemic striking, we all went off on a tour of some towns locally and regionally. And we did a sort of survey of some of the kind of key assets that other towns had that made them either successful or not. Was that, was a report produced in the end on that as to what things that, that, that some of the more successful towns had that we could perhaps adopt? And would that include anything that we could put forward to the community board as a, as a potential project? I can't, I can't remember the outcome of that report, whether it did actually produce anything that sort of said, we're definitely missing this. We've definitely got to have that.
It, it, it actually did. It picked up a number of things like the advertising, you know, the, the huge flags at town market and all this sort of thing. Better signage in Stanley Stratford and on all that sort of, that's, that's, that kind of detail it drilled down to the report. That could be circulated. I've, I've still got a copy. I think others have as well. Paul's nodding.
It might just stimulate some.
Might be as well to feed that in.
Yeah, that sounds good. Just on signage, Howard did mention in our last subgroup about digital signage as an opportunity. So that's on our, on our radar as well. So if there are signage issues that come out of that report, that could be good to coordinate with.
Okay, Paul, can you circulate that to, well, via, by you, Warren, or via the?
Probably via Sophia, so.
Can you do that, Paul?
Yes, but when I find it, I'm trying to find it on the system at the moment. Yes, I will.
I, I, I know I've got it on my machine. I can, I can ship it all over to you if you like.
That, that would be welcome.
Yep, okay. Let me just make a note.
One of the things that was talked about, and it's probably slightly peripheral to this group at the moment, but it does help people walk, walk into town is more, the more, more benches in and around the town centre and our ways in and out of town.
They've got that on the agenda as, as, as well. We've been looking at where, where we can place some more benches.
So that's something we could put forward to the community board department fund.
Right, you said that in front of witnesses. Well done. I think we, I think again, we've, we've got it recorded in some minute somewhere, Paul, about the, because we were looking at whether we could put benches outside the old post office. And elsewhere, we could probably dredge that up and send it to Sophia as well. Yep.
Yep.
Robin, you've been very patient for a change.
Well, thanks for that compliment, Mike. Of the change or the compliment, but the, the the last time the town centre was looked at in any major consultation was a real consultation was 2007, when the Market Hill proposals were rooted. They got so far along and then for various reasons, they weren't progressed. They also looked at how to change town centre and, and phase two of that proposal was to take out areas of shops and, and put in pedestrianisation and change the whole way. Because in them days, the vision was, which is not possible now, is that you could possibly, if the agreement of all the landowners had been possible, you could have put a road from the Mays Morton Road to the car parking Western Avenue. That's gone away. So these things have looked at, how has we walked away from that at that time? So Warren's quite right to say that it's good that the new council's actually thinking to come back into it. Obviously, whatever scheme do will not be as large as what that scheme was. It was a government funded study. And we lost that at about the same time as they started building the theatre. But, but, but I do think it's good that they're going to look at it again because whatever we do changes the town, it's got to be the right decision. And if it can keep us buoyant and economic and this independent market and traders going, which is what we've got to be careful of, that we do something that actually keeps the trade going and doesn't interfere with the trade. And it, or because we're not quite in the scope, what they did in Bista, which Warren, I think, mentioned once, you know, they redesigned the whole of the town centre in Bista. Jorwul Valley decided to change the whole way the town centre looks in Bista. I mean, I don't think we're into that sort of thing, but it is encouraging that the council's willing to put money into either study or do something because the town centre has been wanting for investment equivalent to other parts of the Vale, and it's not the Vale, now it's Buckinghamshire. So it has been wanting investment and it has been asking for it. So the reason we're so outdated in coming forward with it, because no one's ever offered us it. So I think we shouldn't snap, we shouldn't sort of be too sniffy about it and we should be just grateful that someone's paying an interest at last.
Okay, anybody else? Any other comments on this? Yes, Warren?
Every time I hear the word Bista being mentioned, I, I always have to say, do you really want another 25,000 houses in Buckingham to, to, to to merit the level of investment that Bista has? And I suspect most people in Buckingham don't.
I wasn't suggesting that, Warren. I was just saying that they took a route in Jorwul Valley. I'm not saying.
Yeah, to double the size of the town. So they clearly had to invest in the town centre.
To be frankly honest, Warren, that came after doubling the, the size of the town and then it doubled again, didn't it? But I'm not saying that's what we should do one. I'm just saying that other areas have chose different ways. What's Buckingham's route is probably not going to be the same. I'm sure we don't want to be the size of Whitney, which would be a community the size of Whitney to foster something like that. But we do need investment in the town centre and we've got a unique offer here, which is a lot of independent traders. And we need to make sure that we keep them for another generation. So whatever we do has got to be sympathetic. There's nowhere in the town to do what they did in Bista because we don't know who owns the land. So I don't think that's, that's a false herring, but you should compare, compare other places and what they've done historically to what you've done here. And the, and the 2007 scheme wasn't like the Bista scheme, but it was on par somewhere between the two. I can send the, I've, I've got it on file somewhere because it interests me. So it's available, but it's not what we can do now. But I do think we need a proper study, a proper look at it, a balanced way to look at it and make sure.
So, sorry, Charlie, we can just clarify, the, the working group is about, as a small scale potential partial pedestrianisation of the town centre. The civic trust study that Robin is referring to, which was in the early 2000s, was a complete regeneration project, but because of land ownership issues could never progress. So we're kind of talking across, cross purposes here.
I'm just saying it was looked at.
No, sorry, Robin. I, I, I think they are different issues. We, we can pick up the good points from our earlier town visits and we can add some other bits in around the edges as well. But as, as Warren says, it's, it's nowhere near as a major overhaul for, for the, for the town. Okay, anything, anything else on that point? Any other comments? No, that's it then. We're down to chairman's announcements. And given that the elections are now on in May and our next meeting is scheduled for the 22nd of July, this will be my last meeting with the group, both as chairman and as a member. So thank you all for your forbearance. Next meeting is on, as I just said, the 22nd of July, although I think we should be ready to, to meet as a matter of urgency. If, if suddenly the Covid restrictions are lifted and we can, we can stomp back into business, in which case you may not have seen the last of it. Okay, that's.
With your, your goodwill, chairman, can I please ask that we record in the minutes? Thank you for the time that the chairman's given to these matters and thank you for his time as a councillor and, and I think he's been an excellent councillor and an excellent chairman of whatever he's done. And I want it recorded in minutes that I think so. He's always been able to close me down, so that can't be too bad.
Our second then. Not the closing down.
Your one to talk to.
I meant in discussion.
Well, thank you.
I think we need to record it.
Shut up. Thank you for your kind words, Robin. I think the meeting is now closed.